Okay, I'd like to call this public meeting to order. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, and to the nation in which we live, with the due justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan, Mr. McAndrew.
President.
Dr. Rothschild.
President.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Gawn.
Here, and please let the record reflect that Mr. Rogan did contact Mrs. Reed and explain that he would not be here tonight for the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to table item 7C.
On the question? On the question, Stevens &amp; Lee has submitted their budget as requested, and it's in the process of being reviewed. Council has not received it yet, therefore we're tabling the fee agreement with Stevens &amp; Lee until next week, so that is the reason that we're making this motion at the top of the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
I'd also like to make a motion to appoint Councilman McAndrew as temporary chair for the Committee on Finance.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Mrs. Reed, if you would please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three eight minutes of the Scranton-Lacawanna Health and Welfare Authority meeting held November 21, 2019. Three B, annual financial report for the City of Scranton year ended December 31, 2018, prepared by the office, excuse me, prepared by the Office of the City Controller. Three C, correspondence sent to Auditor General Eugene DePascuali dated January 21, 2020 in reference to the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. Three D, minutes of the Scranton Sewer Authority Board of Directors meetings held November 21 and December 19, 2019. Three E, correspondence received from Mayor Page G. Cognetti dated January 21, 2020 regarding U.S. Conference of Mayors' Winter Meeting. Three F, correspondence received from the Scranton Fire Department dated January 24, 2020 in response to emergency management coordinator duties and actions. Three G, fuel card analysis received from the Office of the City Controller dated January 23, 2020.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, receive them filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I do. I'm very proud to announce that next Tuesday, my daughter Mariah and the leadership of Lacawanna Core Program Class of 2020 will be hosting a fundraising event to benefit their group's project for the Valley Community Library Children's Outdoor Garden Maze and Constructions. The event is called Tacos, Trivia, and More and will be held, like I said, next Tuesday at Montage Mountain.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have two. We received, uh, city council received a copy of a reminder from the city's forester and chairman of the shade tree commission, Mr. Tony Santoli, who asked if the following could be announced. It is unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to engage in the business of tree removal, tree pruning, stump removal, and tree planting without first registering with the Office of Attorney General, Bureau of Consumer Protection, as required by the Home Improvement Consumer Protection Act. The requirement is applied on work being performed either on private property or publicly-owned property. Insurance for vendors of tree services required, and in addition, workers' compensation insurance is also required. Vendors of such services should call the Bureau of Consumer Protection for information and ways to register at 1-717-772-9707. Also, Kohanski &amp; Company will conduct an audit exit conference regarding the 2018 Independent Auditors Report next Tuesday, February 4th, at 5:45 PM in council chambers. Mrs. Reed?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Uh, just a note, please request, uh, please, I would please ask speakers to state your name for the record, and the first speaker tonight is Joan Hodowanitz.
Joan Hodowanitz, city resident and taxpayer. With regard to the audit, don't forget down the line you have to publish in the newspaper the summary of revenues and expenditures per the Home Rule Charter, so. Also, um, I know we don't have a date, but I'm still going to be asking every week, when are you going to bring in Rainy and Rainey? I think that company has lots of splaining to do. Um, they're getting paid and I'm not know, I don't understand why. I don't know what their value added is, if any. Um, what's the status of the MS4 permit?
We have not received an update on that yet. We did send the letter out. We asked for a response, so I'm expecting to receive one soon.
Okay, I think you all saw in this week's paper about Maryland is suing DEP in the state of Pennsylvania, so I think stormwater is something that's going to raise its ugly head sooner rather than later. Uh, and I'd be very interested if down the line in your conversations with mayor, um, you could see what her thinking is on the subject of stormwater, because I don't see anything in the budget addressing it, other than it's an important part of our budget, but no numbers. Oh, tomorrow, I, I should've brought in a cake, even though it's one day early. Tomorrow will be the first anniversary of having passed the Ethics Code. And for those of you who joined me last Friday for the bid opening of, um, the bids for the solicitor for the Ethics Code, oh, guess what? There were no bids. So that's going to have to be rebid, and that ethics board is not going to be functional until it starts getting a solicitor on board. I'd be very curious to what the board is going to do should some citizen forward a complaint. I mean, it would, they wouldn't be able to process it, so now that it's going to be one-year-old, it's time to get that board resource to, and to do more than simply training. Training is fine, but the way I read that ordinance, it is to dispose of allegations of violations of the code, and they cannot do that today, so. Also, have you, as president of city council, received in writing the adjusted political campaign contribution limits?
Uh, I have not yet. We did notify the business administrator that that was something that he had to do.
Well, before I left as the chairperson, I sent in writing, uh, to the BA's office reminder citing paragraph and section that that had to be done on January 1st. It's now January 28th, so. And that carries over for the next four years of elections. It needs to be done. Um, oh, I was very, very pleased to see in the paper, in the legals, um, a, um, job app, a job search for Human Resources Director of the City of Scranton. I don't know if you all saw that? And I'm happy about it because it's important to me that positions like this, if there's a vacancy, get advertised, so every qualified person in the city has an opportunity to compete. I only have one question. I see near the bottom this line, applicants should include any salary requirements. Well, the last time I looked, the salary was fixed in the 2020 budget at $58,250, which was an increase from the previous year. So I'm assuming that that's what the salary cap is going to be. Hopefully. I would like to know if, if something else transpires, if we hire somebody at a different salary higher than what's in the budget. Also, good news, it's tax time, and if should you need Form 1040 or Form 1040 SR, you've seen your people over 65, you can get these blank forms and other blank forms, if you need them, at your local library or the Library Express. And if you need, let's say, Schedule D or Schedule C, uh, and you don't have access to a computer, they'll download them for you. Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice, thank you, have a nice night. That's Hodowanitz. Next speaker is Norma Jeffries.
Good evening, Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I have to thank, um, who are they, NDC Company, you know, for coming and giving a presentation, but unfortunately, I was not able to hear a lot of what they were saying. I know that the acoustics here and the system, you know, when I listen at home, it's very difficult sometimes. I think I have it up to 65 in order to hear. However, one thing I kept thinking was, why are they sitting with their backs to us? It's bad enough that the sound system in here is not that terrific, and we do appreciate, um, you know, the recording and offering that, um, opportunity, but that little section over there was empty. I kept thinking, why can't they sit over there with their backs to Mulberry Street? That way they'll be projecting out to you and to the audience.
Yeah, we have, uh, so this is another project that Mrs. Reed and I have, have talked about in terms of the sound system, and we do have someone, correct Mrs. Reed, that is in control and in charge of the sound in these chambers? And you are correct, it is not the best, even when you're listening on ECTV. So it is something that I'm hopeful we will be able to address sooner rather than later.
But I was just thinking about when there's a caucus, you know, for them to sit at this table with their backs to us doesn't do us any good, us being the general public.
Right, so in a perfect world, you know, they're, they're addressing the council, and if you could hear them, that would be fine, um, but I see what you're saying, so we'll, we'll discuss that. Um, so it's, you know, bad enough they have to read their lips, but I know what you're saying.
And I took several notes that concerned me. Um, let me back up. One of the things that I kept thinking, right to know, so I did do a lot of reading over this last three days of the documents that are available, and I was just so surprised that some of them went back to 2012. I said, 2012, I was raising my kids and I wasn't thinking about parking in Scranton. And the latest documents I had were from 2016, which they did mention today. I took down several comments and notes that concerned me about what they were saying, because I just feel that, um, that's Legalese talk. They've got to get it down to our level. Any of those documents, you know, they have to be at John Q. Public's level, that we as a public understand what they're saying. It's great to put those slides up there. There were a couple of bullets up there that meant absolutely nothing to me, and maybe it meant something to you, the panel of council. But I started to write them down, and I'm running out of paper as to what they had on their screens, and the last screen shot, and I'm not saying anything, I'm not degrading them at all, because I've done these type of presentations and they've got, a lot of work goes into them, a lot of work. And, um, but the last screenshot of the budget, the numbers, the previous numbers and the current numbers, I don't know who that was to benefit, because I couldn't see it, and I'm not sure who else could see it out in the audience. So, um, one of the things that concerned me was the 45 years that this contract is in place, and they, I think towards the end, they said something like, oh, if, um, if we don't need the money or something like that, they won't increase the rates. But on the papers that I was reading, it goes through from 2020 all the way to 2065 or 60. I kept thinking, well, I won't be here to see if that rate's going to go in, and they had, each year they have on the list, the amount of money that the, the cost is going to go up, which I think is a little bit foresighted, you know, to take it all the way through up to 45 years from now. Uh, one other thing that I failed to mention to you, Bill, when I was talking with you about this, was that, um, is there any consideration or can they consider some kind of a voucher system for the, um, people that go into the Career Center down on Franklin Avenue? Anyone that's going there is going for a job, and to be, have to run out and put money in the meter and worry about that, or of course they can walk or take the bus, but if they're going there on their, with their own vehicles, it seems like there should be some kind of a voucher system, since they're unemployed, they're trying to find work, and they've got to pay those, those meters.
Yeah, so that's something that I can certainly bring up to them, and I know that you had posed several questions in writing already and had sent them to me, so I had an opportunity to speak to the two gentlemen from NDC prior to the caucus tonight, and I had expressed to them that you had some questions and some concerns that you wanted cleared up. So they had reiterated to me that any questions from you or anyone else in the public, as long as they are in writing, I can take them to those gentlemen who are very well-versed in all of those documents, and they will do their best to answer them and clarify anything. So, um, I, I do have the original questions you sent. Any other additional ones, if you could email them to me, and I will get them to them, and, and they said they will answer them for you.
And one final question that I have is, um, how do they get classified as a nonprofit? I went to the dictionary to look up, well, in dictionary, I Googled it to see, what does it mean to be a nonprofit? And I was wondering, how do they classify themselves as a nonprofit? And that's my final question.
Sure. Uh, I don't know the, I know they have to, I think Solicitor Hayes, maybe you can answer this question.
That's a determination made by the IRS. Uh, they've received that designation through filing the appropriate application with the IRS.
But at all the things that they said, that I was reading about, didn't seem to fit the classification that they were, so I was just wondering, is it, how did they, but of course they're out of New York City, so maybe it makes a difference in where you're coming from, but what I was reading, it didn't seem that they would, they fit into a nonprofit.
That's it for the speakers on the sign-in list. Uh, does anyone else like to address council? And by the way, before Mr. Dobson comes up, um, we did receive a presentation from NDC tonight, and, uh, I'll ask Mrs. Reed now if she would ask the administration if they would just put that on the city's website, so that you can see it. I realize it's hard to see sometimes with the, the screen that was put up. Mr. Dobson?
Yes, Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Taxes paid, by the way. Okay, once again, I'm very concerned about the walkability idea with bicycle paths and or lanes and what have you in Scranton. Once again, I have to be licensed, insured, have my car inspected, and registered. And, uh, somebody with four DUIs and a GED can ride a bicycle through town, even if they're barred from driving till 2029. Okay, uh, we have a lot of hills and stuff, so I've ridden bike for exercise, and there's so many hills that I used to pick the rail lines, the old defunct rail lines, not the rail trail, uh, just because it's a three-degree grade, in other words, it would only raise three feet per hundred feet, or something like that, uh, if you're going up the hill due to the train traffic. Now, once again, I'd like to get on the Act 511 decision, were underappraised, or under, what's the other word for it? But at any rate, uh, underassessed, uh, as far as the value of the property, so that plays right into their decision, and obviously, the judge didn't take that into consideration. But however, I would like to point out, and I failed to last week, anything that we can't get on 511 taxes is going to be transferred on to property tax eventually. And I'd like to remind that landlord that he gave $5,000 out for a loan, well, hopefully he's the first in line for a property tax increase. Half of these guys are dragging in Section 8s and stuff like that, and I'm not against that. I don't want people walking around homeless or, uh, whatever, but, uh, the point in being that they make buku bucks. And I had one multiple dwelling, and every time a Section 8 moved in, they got the keys to everything, and, uh, obviously, there were, the landlord was getting paid double of what I was able to pay as a working stiff, so it's something to think about. They hog up the taxes and then they're out creating a lot of consternation over this. And, uh, once again, on, uh, trash, uh, I have here a little article that was in the Sunday paper, and I'm going to pass it to you guys, because I am already aware of it through many years of experience on privatized trash. And, uh, this man was apparently paying about the same many years ago. And if I had generated 10 bags a month, I would have paid the same as what Scranton bill is today. And the only reason I didn't was because I used to take my missus up to work on Saturdays if she had work, and then I'd drive back home and, uh, up to Susquehanna County, and I'd fill the car up with recyclables. And, uh, keep in mind, we're part, somewhat a party animal, so, you know, there's a lot of bottles and, uh, stuff, and I would take it over to recycling center for three bucks, you know, so I probably would have been paying, who knows? So I'm going to pass this to Catherine. Please read it and keep it in mind. And furthermore, if we do, on a pay-to-throw, uh, I've seen so many people, when I rode those rail trails, that, uh, and they were just defunct railroad lines that trees weren't growing, and, uh, I would see, but one day I, I stuck a pencil and paper in my little bag, because I seen a guy with mattresses on a pickup truck way back in along East Mountain, you know, way back there. And I know what he was doing, and he hit a dead end where you had to even get off your bicycle and walk around and take the bike up, so you didn't fall yourself, but I know what he was doing. So I was going to keep track of, uh, if I seen somebody back there dumping and just turning their license plate. I was tired of it. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, have a nice night. Anyone else?
Good evening, members of council. Tom Coyne, uh, have a general announcement first of all, is, uh, in talking to the staff members at the Walmart in Taylor, which I'm sure you're aware of, uh, it looks like they are going to be closing, closing from 20, changing from the 24 hours, and as of estimated February 1st, they're going to be closing at midnight. So at midnight through, I guess, 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the morning, the store will close, it'll no longer be a 24-hour location. There hasn't been any discussion from that anywhere in newspapers, I just found that out from the staff, staff itself at night. In reviewing the documents from council and over the past couple of sessions, I've noticed that in the comptelvers scanning of paperwork, uh, checks paid to the City of Scranton and paid out of the City of Scranton, uh, for example, the University of Scranton's check and the, uh, a check paid by the city account, whoever scanned them in did not block off on the bottom of the check both routing number and bank accounts. Those never should be scanned into public documents with your routing numbers and your bank account numbers, because that is just an open for fraud for people anywhere in the world to start draining your accounts. You're giving them the keys to it by scanning in. Those specific numbers should be covered over in blank for that security purpose. And last of all is, I put a motion in on 114, uh, and applied it for signage. Can I get a status on where that is?
Yeah, so, uh, I spoke before the meeting with the officials from, uh, NDC, uh, who oversee the parking operation. I believe the, the, uh, the thing that you presented was to allow the press to have a free parking spot. Am I correct, Mr. Coyne?
That's correct, and also a, uh, a signed parking spot, somewhere, an assigned parking spot with, uh, a press besides the city, a signed parking spot within the areas between the, uh, school board, the school board and the one spot between the school board and the county courthouse, since these are the three governmental areas, ones that just placarded for press only.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm forwarding that to NDC, they're going to take a look at it, but that would have to be coordinated between them and, uh, Scranton Parking Authority.
The signage, though, would come to city council. As a matter of fact, it's as part of the, uh...
It, it would come before council, but if, if council makes any type of decision in, in terms of the, the parking meters, uh, and it hurts or helps their revenue, uh, they have to be involved in that decision-making process. So in other words, we can't take, we can't just give parking spots away. They, it has to be coordinated between the authority and NDC.
Actually, you can give parking spots away, because under the contract given to the, given out to the city, the city has, 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 in its documents, held authority to change any requirements for parking within the City of, uh, City of Scranton by council rules. That's actually as part of the, uh, city charter.
Well, I spoke, I spoke to them tonight prior to the meeting, and they said that it had to be coordinated with those two entities, so I, I, I'm going to go about it that way, and then I will let you know.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Marie Schumacher. Uh, I was, uh, had to go to a very important birthday party last week, so I left right after public comment, but, um, you certainly got my attention when I went to the ECTV, Mr. Gawn. Uh, the week before, Lenny was here, talked about a specific issue, and then I heard, you didn't say anything, did you, Mr. Donahue? I didn't, no. And, and Bill, you went on to the stormwater, and I just about hit the ceiling. I mean, when is the city going to actually do something? We're, no, let's get a grant and have another big study. We had Arcadia, we have, uh, yes.
But, but this is for Kaiser Valley specifically, and this isn't coming from me, because I'm not a city engineer. This is coming from the city engineer, the DPW director, and apparently our grant writer.
If they want to do it for the whole valley, fine, but those people need help and they need it now. They've been here, some of them, I mean, two of the guys that run our little group, they've been waiting 20 years.
I understand that.
And they keep getting, you know, and, and I believe what Lenny said was, could you tell us what's going on with that one little project? They had a, a low-cost solution. Now, what low cost is, I can't believe that the city engineer can't do something, and there are other grants out there that, you know, maybe the, uh, residents association in Kaiser Valley would be willing to submit one and, and put it through the city, but anyway, I don't want to, but I, it's just, you know, it's, if we don't stop soon doing more studies and more studies and more studies and wasting money there and start actually doing something about the stormwater, I'll probably be pushing up daisies, the way it looks. Uh, however, as upset as I was with that, Big Brother just put me over the edge when I read the article in the paper that Tony Santoli had put in, and I can tell you, if, I will not be doing that. I don't know why. I've been trained to prune my own trees, I will prune my own trees, it's my private property, and if they want to come and arrest me, they are perfectly willing, but that is way, way over. I mean, what do I have to do next? We're going to have to plant a seed? We're going to have to write to some government official, get a permission to plant a seed? This is crazy, absolutely crazy. But moving on, uh, with, uh, parking, I believe that there was not to be any more delivery parking taking up spaces, and I continue coming up Linden Street and seeing delivery trucks, you know, parking in the lane, because there's no, I thought there were supposed to be some specific spots for deliveries. Specific hours, well...
There are. Loading and unloading. Loading and unloading zones, according to NDC.
And certain hours, well, I mean, they park people in, and yeah, maybe you can go in and find them, or if you need to, but that is not really fair to people who are paying $2 an hour to park, and then they get locked in by a delivery truck. And the EC garage, if you recall, we have an agreement, the city has an agreement with Steamtown 300 to share the cost of the renovation of the electronic, or Electric City Garage. And they are to produce the bills that they have paid, and we matched them up to, I believe it's about $5 million. Now, what I would like to know is, number one, have they drawn on that account yet? And is that money in a, an interest-bearing account someplace?
I don't know.
I mean, I hope it's not just sitting there and...
I, I don't know the answer to that, specific answer to that question, but if you want to email that, I can, I have other questions from Mrs. Jeffrey, Mrs. Jeffries that I can get to NDC.
Okay. And then the HR director. Do you know, I, I did put in a right to know, but are we advertising any place out of the city? And, but I, I, one more to that, because, you know, it's one of these that lit my fuse again. When I looked at the budget on the police, you have budgeted, may I finish this? $700,000 for overtime. We, the taxpayers, were told when they were granted that extension by the former mayor, that they were going to reduce the overtime by $400,000, that which would have brought it down to like $300,000. They overran last year, they're overrunning now, and then I thought our police were supposed to live in the city, and we have, I see a picture today, we got a police officer from German, and we've got a, well, with the arrest record of one of the firemen that lives in Troop.
Okay. You can, I don't want to cut you off, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah, that's fine. My time's up.
Okay. Thank you. I'll address it in fifth order.
Thank you.
Anybody else for tonight?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. McAndrew, any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. As chairman of Public Safety Committee, I would like to thank school resourcer Officer Jill Foley and juvenile officer Kevin Uwer for their swift actions in arrest of a juvenile in last week's multiple threats on West Scranton High School. I would also like to recognize, last week, one of our very own Scranton firefighters, Chuck Bardabah, while off duty and during a basketball game at Valley View, rushed to the aid of a collapsed referee in cardiac arrest and provided CPR. Great job. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Yes, I do have one comment. Last week at the meeting, I had mentioned that I planned on having a meeting with OECD this past Friday as chair of the Committee for Community Development, and I did have that meeting with Mary Pat Ward, the director of OECD. And I will be having several other meetings individually with, with the program specialists through OECD. So I was able to get a great comprehensive overview from Mary Pat of their, their programs and the work that they've been doing, and I look forward to serving as a liaison with that department and council. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Councilman McAnd, or Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes, just briefly. One is, I reviewed the contract we had with Rainey &amp; Rainey, and when I pulled the legislation, the original bid went out for Rainey &amp; Rainey to do audits for budget years 15 through 18, but then that was amended to just be 15 and 16, and that's the only copy of a contract that I have. So, Ms. Reed, would we be able to contact the business administrator's office and also the comptroller's office to see if there's a current contract they're working on that we just don't have in our office?
And also, just to follow up on a request that both myself and Councilman Gahan made back in September regarding Parrot Avenue, the neighbors are, it's becoming a raceway. So would you be able to send correspondence to Chief Graziano to see if he ever looked into that? And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue. Just a few comments. Number one, Ms. Schumacher had asked, and I think Councilman Pass had asked, that the executed contracts be placed on the city's website. So we did send that request to the mayor's office. They did get back pretty quickly, and they said that that request is part of future updates to the city website. So I think sometime in the future, we will be, be seeing that. Maybe not as quickly as, as you would like, but I'm sure that's on the docket. The second thing, I did, we did send a letter out, this is something that was asked back in 2019, in terms of the Ethics Code acknowledgement by city employees. So we really asked two questions, has a deadline for employees to submit the acknowledgement of receipt of the Ethics Code been established? Also, what action, if any, will the city take to enforce the signing of the document? And what action and/or discipline, if any, will the city take against employees who may refuse to sign this document? I realize that the Ethics Code is kind of in limbo. I have a meeting with, with members of the Ethics Board tomorrow. You know, Ms. Hodowanis mentioned that it was signed into law a year ago. You have to remember that there were several, when this was first on the docket for council, that's when the previous mayor was, his house was getting raided, and that whole thing was going on with the FBI. So there were several roadblocks that were put up. So it didn't get off to the best start, number one. Number two, prior to myself bringing that up and other members of council, nothing was done with the Ethics Board. So while we haven't made the greatest amount of progress, we have made some progress, and we will get there, but it will, it will take time. Again, one thing I've learned in, in six years of being on council is things don't move in government as quickly as you want them to move. And it is frustrating, frustrating at times, but, you know, progress will be made on that, I'm very confident. And I do appreciate Ms. Sheridan, who is the, the new chairwoman of the board, who I think is committed to that and who is doing a pretty good job. I did mention at the beginning of the meeting that we are having the exit conference with the auditors next week, Tuesday, February 4th, at 5:45 PM, so if anyone's interested in that. I did receive a citizen's complaint about Locust Street in Westside, and if, Mrs. Reed, if you could send that to the DPW and the administration and ask that they would consider putting that on the paving list. One of the things this gentleman mentioned was that with all the work that Pennsylvania American Water Company is doing, they're doing work on like both sides of that street, but they're not hitting, obviously, Locust Street, and that is in really rough condition. In terms of the truck traffic and the issues on Third Avenue, I, I know our office has been inundated with complaints, and they are legitimate complaints. I was out there, I did actually, in the last few days, see the truck traffic going up and down Third Avenue. I just want everyone to know that our office did send a detailed letter to the DPW and to the city engineer, asking for their response and their review of that situation. And Mrs. Reed, I would ask this week if you would just get in contact with Mr. Poshous and ask him if, if there's any progress on that. Again, I know these things take time, but there are several people on that block who are ill, not feeling well, and it's really taking a toll on them, the situation. So I would hope that we can move as quickly as possible on that. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the council number 2, 1983, and ordinance, amending file of the council number 39, 1977, entitled, and ordinance establishing rates of discount and penalties on taxes due on real estate to the city of Scranton by amending certain provisions relating to discounts, the discount period, installment payments, and penalties on taxes due on real estate to the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Sure, moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I just want to take a second to explain this. So this is a request from our tax collector, Bill Fox, and this legislation came down from the administration. He was proposing making all payment schedules the same. Currently, the city and school district have a step-up penalty period that is 5% to 7.5% and then 10%. His proposal was copying the county schedule that goes directly to 10%, which would put all governing bodies on the same schedule. Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
And I would just like to add that the school district already did approve this, so they're, they're just waiting on us to do that.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file of the council number 1, 2020, closing and vacating a portion of Blucher Avenue between Beach Street and Birch Street.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
Oh, sorry.
Roll call, please.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file of the council number 2, 2020, amending file of the council number 43, 2018, and ordinance amending file of the council number 100, 1976, entitled, and ordinance as amended levying general and special taxes for the fiscal year 1977 by setting the millage for the year 2020, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by amending Section 1, reverting back to the millage rates from 2016, which are .232521 mils levy on land and zero point, excuse me, .050564 mils levy on all buildings, and by eliminating the dedicated millage for debt service contained in Section 2, and replacing the dedicated millage for debt service with a dedicated debt percentage of 33% of real estate tax revenues collected on a current-year basis.
What's the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, previously tabled.
And just before we adjourn the meeting, I failed to mention, Ms. Schumacher had asked a question about the police overtime, and it is budgeted this year at $700,000. Mrs. Reed, if we could ask Chief Graziano, I know we asked in the past, and I honestly can't remember if he provided it or not, and he usually gets back to us fairly quickly. A large, I don't know if a large percentage, but a percentage of that amount is reimbursable to the city, so it is $700,000, but I think what we were looking for last year was what amount was reimbursed. So that $700,000 figure is not, you know, the actual amount that the city has to pay, but we will, we'll get that figure for you. Okay?
Well, I, I know we've, just to add on to that, too, I know previously we've asked for analysis on that, and we just never received that. So I think we're going to have to have a conversation with the new administration about doing an analysis of the previous contract, especially going into contract negotiations next year.
Okay, if there's no further business, I'll make, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.